Let us pray. Father, we're indeed grateful for this weather. Thank you for bringing us through the winter. And thank you for this springtime. Thank you, Father, for another school year that is winding down. We thank you for your blessings on our school district. Thank you for the accomplishments of our students. We're grateful for the champions of the classroom, our outstanding teachers, the backbone of our district. Thank you for our administrative team, for our superintendent, our Board of Education that works tirelessly on behalf of our parents and students to deliver a first-rate education throughout our district. For these proceedings tonight, may there be unity, may there be vision, may there be clarity. We ask for wisdom in all discussions and for all decisions. And for all you do, we'll give you the thanks. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I move that the Board of Education see to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get approval for the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education accept the agenda as written.
I second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call.
No.
Yes.
Schla.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Next is public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak at this time? Do we have any slips?
I didn't receive any yet.
Okay. All right, if there's no one wishing to speak, then we'll move forward. We have special order of business. We are going to hear a PBIS Swiss data update from Dr. Michelle Cross.
I had spoken here before about where we are with our PBIS installation. This year was rolled out in January, Tier One only. At the beginning of next year, we're going to start Tier Two and Tier Three training. But where we are right now is we have all buildings at least up to 70% installed with Tier One. I'm going to go through just some checklist data and some Swiss data of where we're at. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. There's two different measurements we look at when we're working with our teams in our buildings, the first one being the installation checklist. And those are just specific activities that each team looks at needing to do in their buildings. And so then they rate those items as either installed, partially installed, or not installed at all. We're looking to get a Tier One score of 70%. Right now, 86% of Hazel Park schools are at 70% for Tier One implementation. The junior high and high school still have a little ways to go, but they're working at it, and hopefully they'll get there by next year. The next assessment tool we use is what's called the TFI, or the Tiered Fidelity Inventory. And what that measures is... It's a way for personnel in the school and the students for us to measure how much they know about what's been put in place in the school. So the way that's measured is we have one of the coaches from a building come into a building that's not theirs, and they interview staff and they interview students. And they ask questions like, "Do you know what your behavior expectations are? Do you know how, you know, positive behavior is acknowledged?" And then there's a series of questions and percentages that are computed from that. That measurement, we do that measurement, we've done it three times this year, we'll probably do it more next year, is to kind of give us a guide as to where we're at. Sometimes we think people, staff and students, know what they need to know, and when we take this assessment, we realize they don't, and so we need to go back and we need to either reteach staff or reteach students, whatever that assessment shows us. WEB, they are at 79% completed, 21% in progress. They've started everything. The Tiered Fidelity Inventory, they did take a little bit of a drop, and I was kind of interested in this because normally that doesn't happen, and it hasn't happened with any other school. And one of the things that we discussed was that initially, when you take that, when you do that TFI first time around, I think you tend to overestimate what you've gotten done, and by the time you come around to the second assessment, you've learned more about what those questions are really asking, and you're thinking deeper about, you know, do we really have this at the point where we need it to be? And so I think that's what happened here and why you see that drop. This is their Swiss data since the beginning of the year, which looks pretty good. January is when rollout was, and you can see a drop, and these are average referrals per day over the course of the year. United Oaks, 86% completed. That was on the installation checklist. And as you can see, their Tiered Fidelity Inventory went up to 70%. There's their Swiss data. Again, it's pretty significant decrease in behaviors. Hoover, 76% completed. Again, they went from 63% to 83% between the two measurement data points. And here's their Swiss data. So all this data, when the building teams are meeting as a team, they're looking at all of these measurements, the Tiered Fidelity Inventory, the Swiss data, and for their building, they're determining what they still need to work on, what is in place, and then what the next steps need to be. Junior High is at 69%, so they missed that 70% mark by 1%. And again, their Tiered Inventory went up significantly. And here's their Swiss data. High School's at 41%. As I said, they still have a little more work to do. One of the issues at the high school, and I had a conversation with Mr. Daly today about this, is all the schools' trainers and coaches are there full-time. At the high school, they don't have that. That social worker is there only part-time. So one of the things we talked about doing for next year is assigning somebody else on the team as a coach. So the social worker would remain the trainer, and she would train the building team, but then a full-time person on that team would then become the coach. So that person is there all the time and can support that staff better in making sure that the components of PBIS are implemented. But their TFI went up pretty significantly. And there's their Swiss data, which looks really good. This is Advantage, 97%. Jardon, we're still, we're having technical issues with Jardon getting everything in, but we're working on it. They were a school that was added, they were the last school to be added to the Swiss system, so there's been some glitches. But their Tiered Fidelity Inventory went up significantly also. Edison Maxx.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
How do you get the Swiss data from Jardon and Edison Maxx because of the fact that they're a center program?
So every school has their own Swiss account. So we keep, we put our Swiss data into the Swiss system, just like every other school does. And then we're able to go into that system and print off that data, print off the graphs and the charts. So there, each school has their own account.
Yeah, I have a question. Looking at those graphs, you can see a trend. So we rolled this out, what, December or January?
January.
January.
Actually, the end of January.
And so we see like a dip down in February?
Mm-hmm.
And then we kind of see a trend going back up and then a dip going down. Is that normal?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it really hasn't been a long time, and those are the kinds of things that the building teams really need to sit down and look at and figure out, because in each building, the reasons for those dips up and down can be totally different from one building to the next. It could be a change in staff. You could have had an influx of new students. You could have had some, you know, some students move out. You really have to look at each building's individual circumstances.
I'm just looking at February. I know we have midwinter break.
Right.
Does that account for anything?
Well, and then you have a, you have a week break in there, too. So typically, I know in my building, the week after break, any break is rough. Students have to get reacclimated, just being at school, and you tend to see more behavior.
That, that was what I was kind of thinking.
Yeah. Anybody else?
So the inventory was when you talk, you said you talk to people, you're gauging awareness and understanding of things?
Correct.
And what was, like, examples of what's on the installation checklist?
So the installation checklist is just a checklist of items that need to be completed for Tier One implementation. And so you just go through as a team, and you say, "Okay, have we, have we formed a building team? Yes, we have. Have we come up with our four behavior expectations?" And then it just goes down and getting more specific to the things that need to be installed in each building.
Okay, so the percentage is based on the completion of just that, of that checklist of things that need to be done?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I do, but I'm thinking I'm going to wait to see if she answers it as you're going.
Okay, that's, that was, that was it.
Oh, that is it.
Yeah, that is it.
No, I don't want to like this anymore. Okay, so with your Swiss data, if it's handled in the classroom, does it get keyed in? Like, we've seen reports where it's like done in the classroom and handled, where it doesn't go to the principal or any others. Does that, is that part of your data?
So Swiss, when you input Swiss, you input it as major or minors. So the behavior that's typically handled in the classroom doesn't get put into Swiss. Some buildings put it into Swiss, like I don't in my building because of the type of building it is and that we would have thousands of, you know, lots of behaviors to put in there.
So is there a certain amount of minors in a classroom before it becomes like higher up?
Although, what's, what is a major and a minor is defined in the building, and that's part of the process, is the team sits down and goes through and develops a list of behaviors that would be minors handled in the classroom, minors handled outside of the classroom, and then majors handled outside of the classroom.
So I guess if it was a minor, and it was a minor all the time, it would never get addressed because it would always still be a minor?
Well, it should be addressed in the classroom, within the classroom management system. So if the, if the teacher has and should have a classroom management system, there should be a process for dealing with those minor behaviors within that classroom setting.
Are you talking like if there's the same kid all the time doing the same thing all the time? Is there any repercussions for escalation if the situation isn't handled in the classroom or isn't seeming to be?
Right, so if you have a student like that, that's where Tier Two and Three come into play. So starting in the beginning of next year, we're going to be administering screeners to start identifying who are those Tier Two and Tier Three students, because then we're going to be putting interventions in place specific to those students. This year was Tier One only. These were just Tier One interventions, building-wide.
Thank you.
Michelle, can you talk a little bit? We do have a process in place, not through PBIS though, for children that there's concerns at the building level. Do you want to talk about that? It's not PBIS, but there is a process that...
So most buildings have, you know, like a child find team, so they're, if there's a student having, you know, repeated difficulties over time, every building has a process in place for bringing that to a team within the building to try to problem-solve and come up with interventions for that student, whether they be academic interventions, behavioral interventions. And so that exists in every building in the district.
On your report, I noticed where you showed that your process is, like, some of them are at 80, 90% done, but according to the completions, only like 23, 21%. What is that?
I'm sorry, could maybe...
In the summary slide.
In your summary slides, each one of the schools, you stated that they're like 73% done in the process, but only 23% completed.
There's a total score column, I think is what he's...
Is that what?
Yeah, you say the done ones. Is that where you're seeing it, right there?
Yeah. See?
And the total score?
Well, no, I think it was the slide before there, where you show each, each school that identified, right there, 86 complete, 14% in progress.
So this is the installation checklist, so it's a checklist, and on the checklist are various activities that the team is required to do in order to install Tier One. So when they go through that checklist, what this is saying is that out of the checklist items, 86% of the items have been completed for United Oaks. 14% of those items are still in progress, but all of them have been started.
So like with the high school, it showed that something, somewhere in the range of about 14 or 20% of it was not started?
Correct. That's correct.
Due to the fact that the staffing there, is that what you're saying?
So they don't have a full-time trainer-coach. That person is shared with the junior high. And so that, the trainer-coach leads that team in that building. In most of the buildings, it's the social worker. For the high school, it's the social worker. The counselor at the junior high also is a trainer and coach. But because that person is not there full-time, it's more difficult to get all of those things going on a regular basis. That's why we talked today about having somebody else take over the coaching role next year. So they're there all the time.
So we'll see this again when you start up Tier Two?
Absolutely.
All right, I'm getting someone of that.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This includes approval of meeting minutes, all of our board committee meeting minutes, financial reports, notes of appreciation, and donations. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education accept the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
Roll call.
Schla.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Next, we move on to unfinished business. We have the superintendent evaluation that was done at the end of last year. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accept the evaluation for Superintendent Amy Kirby for the period of September 2016 to December 2017.
I second the motion. Discussion? So it came to our attention that we didn't do a public vote on this letter. This was done at the end of last year, and so we are putting on this, this letter on this agenda today to rectify that. Roll call.
Can I, can I comment, though?
Yep.
I see that we, you know, I, is there any way that we could go, like, maybe save this for another date and go into closed session and have discussion? Just about the whole, I understand that it's the letter, but I think because of the confusion with it, to maybe go and have a discussion on the process of it?
I have to request going to closed session.
Yeah, the superintendent, we have to. And the fact that, I don't know, I'm comfortable, we get the evaluation in closed session as per the superintendent's request. We followed the tool. Our board attorney saw the scores and saw how it was calculated, and I'm comfortable moving forward.
I think that we will plan to talk about the evaluation plans for this year in like an upcoming workshop so that we can all be clear on it. I know that there's been some confusion.
Yeah.
But this is just voting on what was done last year. Any other discussion?
Well, I guess like my comment was the totals on it, because we, the board, haven't seen the totals, you know, at the time it was done. I just thought, like, if we could get clarification on...
What went into the totals.
Yeah, that was, that's my reasoning for wanting to.
I'd like to go ahead and vote on this tonight. We know that the board attorney has viewed them, and I think that if you have concerns about it, we should take that offline and try and figure out how to resolve that. My recommendation.
And work into next year's process.
Make sure we have more transmat here.
Are we able to see them at the next year's process?
We'll have to discuss that in an upcoming workshop. We'll talk about what we can do.
And we'll have to discuss that with our employees.
Yes.
They were shared with you? All of it was shared with you in an email, twice? All the totals and how it was figured?
So what we received was the roll-up, and we know we have questions about understanding how that's calculated, and we can talk some more about that. But I think the process will be the same, that one of the domains is based on growth, and that's how that one piece, the number that came up was calculated, teacher growth.
All right.
All right, roll call.
No.
Yes.
Schla.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
No.
Atkins.
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is the ballot language resolutions, the operating millage replacement proposal. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the revised resolution allowing the operating millage replacement proposal to go on the August 2018 ballot as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, so this proposal, operating millage proposal, was read through thoroughly. I read it during last month's regular meeting. The only change in language on this proposal was filling in the actual dollar amount that will go on the ballot. So I'm just going to read that amount, which is the only thing that changed on the proposal. So I'll just read the last sentence of this, what will be on the ballot, which is, "This operating millage, if approved and levied, would provide estimated revenues to the school district of $3,37,317 during the 2018 calendar year to be used for general operating purposes." Any other discussion? I'm just thankful I don't have to read it again. It's really long. It should be out there if anybody wants to see it, and we're going to start talking a lot more about this, educating everyone on what's coming up, so...
You sure you don't want to read it?
Sorry.
The language is identical, though it was read into the record at the last...
It was read into the record, yes.
...edition as the...
The...
Reference to the last meeting for identical language and hard copies have been provided.
Exactly, thank you.
And the, the operating millage is based on businesses, not homeowners?
Non-homes, okay.
Non-homes, definitely.
Correct.
That way we get that out there.
All right, roll call.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Schla.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Next is a sinking fund millage replacement proposal. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the revised resolution allowing the sinking fund replacement proposal to go on the August 2018 ballot as presented.
Support. All right, so for discussion, this is the exact same sinking fund millage proposal that was read into the record at last month's regular meeting. The only change is the dollar amount, which I'll read now. This sinking fund millage would provide estimated revenues to the school district of approximately $937,885 during the 2019 calendar year, if approved and levied. Any discussion?
This is also sinking funds, so allow us to do some work on...
Technology, right?
Technology and school safety. I guess that's the new ballot that's allowing us to do it that way. Before, we were not allowed to.
So this is, this percentage of the money would be able to be, the sinking fund is the whole would be able to use for those?
All of it would be allocated.
Or would it be the whole sinking fund?
We can...
We can determine.
We can, based on what we need in certain areas, because we still got to use most of the sinking fund for other building...
For facilities.
Buildings, cities to be fixed, so we can all...
Do you want to speak to that?
If approved, the entire amount can be used for any combination of the allowable expenditures within the sinking fund, which include technology and secure if approved.
Thank you. All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Schla.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
All right, moving on to new business, Promise Zone update. This is Rowley Smith.
Ms. Smith. First of all, congratulations.
Okay.
And good luck on the twin.
Yes, it's going to be interesting, for sure, but very excited. So actually, I'll start with that, then. So I will be taking time off for maternity leave, beginning mid to late May, some, at some point, and going into July. So students that need scholarship documents or anything done over the summer should please get that information to me beforehand, even if they can't get the actual documents, just if they let me know it will be something they need, we can be proactive to make sure it's taken care of before, that we have something set up with the school. Basically, what I emailed this information out to all of our scholarship, recent scholarship recipients last week, and said that if they need anything, basically between June 1st and July, or June 1st and August 1st, let's talk about it, just to be sure that we get it taken care of. So I will probably be checking my email at some point over the time, but I can't promise quick responses. So, so the earlier they can let me know about that, those things, the better. And most bills aren't due until August anyway, so it really shouldn't affect too many students. We rarely get them from students needing to be paid before, like mid-August. So it shouldn't affect too many, but just in case, if they could let me know in advance, it would just make it much smoother for everybody. College Advisor Musa Traore will be on staff through the month of June, so he'll be able to answer most questions if students have questions in June. And any questions specific to OCC enrollment can be answered by Jan Brown Williams, who's the dean at OCC's Royal Oak Campus, and I sent her contact information out to former scholarship recipients already, and we'll be sending it out to graduating seniors as well. So the, any students planning to use a Promise Zone scholarship over the summer should also reach out to me as soon as possible, just to make sure we get that paid. They, I think we've probably heard from everyone, because classes start in the next week or two, and we do have a handful of students that will be receiving summer funding, but anyone else should let me know as soon as possible. We've had a slight increase in FAFSA completion since I sent the report to Debbie. So we've had three more FAFSA's completed, so 122 or 59% of Hazel Park High School seniors have completed their FAFSA. They can't, they do have to complete this for any financial aid through us or college or through the federal government, so they should do this as soon as possible, and there is still time. So March 1st is always what we advertise as the time to get it done before, because that's the early deadline. That guarantees any possible funding they'd be eligible for, they can get, but they can still do it and be eligible for quite a few different things. We also, I do not have a scholarship amount update, because I want to wait until closer to the end of the school year, but I do know that we've already surpassed last year's $2.6 million, which was a record, so that is very exciting, and pretty significantly surpassed it. So I will have a number to you guys soon on that. The second step of the Promise Zone Scholarship application is a release waiver form. I know, which I've talked about in the past, they had the electronic form that was emailed out in the fall. I sent to all seniors last week via email a release waiver form that they need to sign. They also need a parent's signature if they will not be 18 by August 1st. And so we also have hard copies in Mr. Traore's and my offices, and I do plan to email that out a couple more times. I asked that students get it by the, get it turned in by the end of next week. That's really not a hard deadline, but again, just to make sure that everything's done before I risk being out of the office. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to get all of those in, so I'll keep reminding seniors. But if you know any who are planning to use Promise Zone funds in the fall, that is something we need. The, just as another reminder, Promise Zone Scholarship information will be communicated to applicants using the email addresses provided in their applications. And so we do ask that they give us personal email addresses because of their school email addresses being canceled or stopped at some point. And so we will continue sending additional information and reminders out to the school district email addresses until the end of the school year, but then we will be using the email addresses that they used on their applications. I don't think I've been here since Musa, our college advisor, was named college, one of three college advisors of the year in the state of Michigan at the Michigan College Access Network's annual College Impact, College Access Impact Awards Dinner, which was held in March. And so if you remember, Hazel Park High School was honored last year at the same awards dinner, and then Musa was honored this year. So it was pretty exciting to have kind of two, two awards going to Hazel Park in a row. So he was very, very deserving of this, and what is, I think, extra cool to me is that we didn't nominate him for it. So we couldn't. It was unbiased people who would, who work with all the different college advisors through the state. So very, very exciting. But unfortunately, we're only able to keep college advisors... But unfortunately, we're only able to keep college advisors for up to two years, so he will be leaving us at the end of June. And Whitney Bernstein, who's a Hazel Park High School counselor, and I have been interviewing candidates to replace him. So we interviewed seven final candidates on Friday, and should have, we quite, we had actually a hard time, because there were some really, really great candidates, which is a good problem to have, but we should have somebody lined up soon who can come, shadow Musa a little bit, and learn a little bit more about the school before they go to training over the summer. One other thing that was not in your report, because I just was reached out to about it, is, pretty exciting, and I think Mr. and Mrs. Hempel will be the ones that know the most about it, because their son has participated in this program over the past three years. And so Transform Automotive is a company based in Sterling Heights. They do tool and die works, so skilled trades. And they had, they actually first started this program three years ago, I think Charles was in the fir, was in the first cohort. And they reached us, out to us about it then, asking if we had any students who would be interested in skilled trades. This program is a three-year training and work commitment, so I believe it's full-time work and training. So one week a month, this participants go to Canada, and all their accommodations, education, everything's paid for while they're there. They do get certified, and then, once they complete that training, they are committed to staying with the company for three years, or else they'll have to repay some of the tuition for the education that they receive. The goal of the people within the company is that everyone will stay and be at that company for a long time, if not their full career. So they're very, kind of, company and people-oriented within the company. And so they are recruiting for another cohort, which we're really excited about. So if you know any seniors or recent graduates who might be interested in that, please connect them with me. I'll be having a phone call with one of their staff members later this week, just to talk about what the process looks like. I know they want the next cohort to start sometime in June, and so I'm not sure what the application timeline looks like, but I do have an electronic brochure and things that I can send out. And so I do plan to email that to all the seniors as well. But if you know anyone, like I said, current seniors, or I think Charles was like a year or two out when he started, right? So it can be recent graduates as well.
And by the way, he is very happy.
That's what, that's what I thought. I'd heard from you guys, and they were very complimentary of him when they reached out wanting to recruit more people. So thank you to him for making Hazel Park look good, so they want more of our students.
Well, I would recommend it to anyone out there that's not quite sure about college. They have a very good benefit program for these kids as well.
It's really, I mean, supposed to be a great company to work for. And they start working full-time right away.
Right away.
And getting their, this education completely paid for.
And he loves going away for the weekend.
Any questions?
Uh, Pastor, congratulate, our congratulations on to Musa for that job.
I will, for sure.
That's really impressive.
Yes, it was very, very exciting. He will definitely be missed.
And if we don't see you, good luck.
I will definitely send pictures if I don't see you before then. Thank you, everyone.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on new business, B, item B is district employment, district employee perfect attendance. So we have a list of employees that have been a perfect attendance this month, as we're continuing to recognize each month the importance of having consistency and having our, our staff committed. We really appreciate that. I don't know if Dr. Kripke has anything you want to add?
No, I agree with everything. You say we're really fortunate to have those that are able to be here and have perfect attendance. We know that research tells us how that really helps our students learn. So we want to thank those teachers that, that have been able to do that.
Item C, Freedom of Information Act, otherwise known as FOIA requests. We had several in this month. This is just acknowledging that those were responded to. Item D, enrollment update. Dr. Kripke, do you want to speak to the enrollment update?
Yeah, so the enrollment update is starting to project for next year's numbers. And again, this is a projection, because people are just starting to enroll online. So these numbers will ebb and flow on a regular basis. Right now, we're looking at, as we've, you've heard me talk about, potential reduction of 100 students due to a large senior class rolling out and a small junior high class rolling up. And so, you know, this will be something that we're gonna watch very, very closely. And we've made accommodations teaching-wise to, to fit the reduction in students. So we have an open house Wednesday night for kindergarten, so hopefully we'll see those kindergarten numbers come up as well. And then also, we've started to get more of our GSRP students to roll into the elementary schools.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Alright, next item E, 2018, 2019 school calendar. Do you want to speak to it, Dr. Kripke?
Yep, the, this calendar was made jointly with our teachers' union. We do that every year, and so we've worked hard to try to limit as many days for early release for teacher workshops, but yet keeping them in there. The calendar has developed, and I think sometimes people say, oh, how do we do that calendar? But the calendar, there's so many workdays that you have to have, and there is a specific limit of hours that you have to teach. And so that is why our calendar has developed the way it is. And then there's a certain number of professional development hours that teachers have to get within there as well. And so when we set our calendar, we don't really set that calendar with the half-days, et cetera, to cause any difficulty for everybody, but there's a specific number of length of, of days that teachers, number of days that teachers work. Additionally, we follow, follow something called the Common Calendar. And that Common Calendar is developed by Oakland Schools and all the superintendents together. And so they set the winter break, they set your spring break, and so we have a consistent break together. And if you want to do something different, you actually have to ask Oakland County and the state to do something different than the Common Calendar. And really, that's obviously so that, that Oakland County is taking those breaks together. Really excited about our calendar. I really appreciate the collaboration of the teachers' union in developing it. I think we have a good calendar going forward. It was done very collaboratively. We're able to balance a little bit of the time off. The elementary's lost one minute of time a day, so that their time is a little more balanced with the junior high and high school.
Dr. Kripke, are we starting on August 28th?
We are starting before the holiday, on August 28th. In Oakland County, you can do this, and so we are, we have agreed to do that, so that we're not running so late into June next year.
That'll build in three extra days?
Yes.
So it goes through, when it ends on a...
Your calendar will end on June 13th, so it'll begin on the 27th with a Teacher Institute Day. Students will come on the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and be off on Friday for the holiday. You cannot be in school on Friday, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And, yeah, so there's a lot of laws going through the legislature right now, just to open that up and allow everybody to be able to do that throughout the state.
So I assume that this, once, after we approve it today, this will get sent home?
It's already up on the website.
Okay.
Ready-to-go. Parents have really been asking for this calendar.
Yeah, I know, I've gotten a few inquiries.
Yes.
So that's good to get it out, especially since we're starting a little earlier.
Alright, we'll move on to the next item, F, administrative guidelines.
So this is, you ready for me?
Yes, please.
This is for informational as well, as the board does not approve administrative guidelines. Administration is supposed to develop administrative guidelines off of policies that the board has developed. So board develops policies, administration comes out with guidelines, it's in your policy handbook. So this is about how we will go through staff reductions if necessary. And so the staff reductions, as you know, changed from teacher tenure, so a little different than it has been done in the past. And it doesn't matter how many years you've been a teacher, but the law says that it's based upon performance. And so the first part that you'll see here in these administrative guidelines are that if somebody's minimally effective or ineffective, they would be the first people to be laid off. And then there's a combination, so if you've been minimally effective in the last five years, if you have high absences, if you have not participated in committees. So all of those things will be laid out for those when you're looking at, when you have to do a reduction in force. And we know that we will have a reduction in force happen at the end of May. It will not be very, very large, but we will have somewhat of a reduction in force at the next month.
Any other comments, questions on them?
How many more administrative guidelines do we have to go before they're shored up?
I think we have about three more areas. Would that be correct, Debbie? Thousand? So we have quite a few to get done?
I'm just trying to get, I'm just getting concerned that we have our policies in place, but the administration doesn't have their guidelines. I know that some of the questions and things that are going on in the buildings are things that administrative guidelines should be able to answer. So my question is, is if the committee is not able to meet, and would like to help open a discussion with the board, are we okay with just having...
The committee meets.
Yeah, but we have four more sections to go, and we're, are we gonna, are we gonna have those done before the close of the school year? I feel like we've just been dragging this on.
We got the committee people, when she sets the meeting, we're there.
Plus also, these are staff guidelines, so we're not involved in these ones.
Right, so I'm saying that we're not really involved in these ones, so getting them in our board packet to review is, should be sufficient.
Well, for our staff guidelines, but as far as the policy goes, we're there to help her out.
Yeah, so we've already set the policy, so the administration should be able to put their guidelines reflective of those policies. I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we're gonna go into another school year and not have our, our whole administrative guidelines, and then we're gonna be revamping our policies, and we haven't even finished our administrative guidelines. I'm just getting concerned, that's all. It wasn't anything against the committee, it wasn't anything against the administration, I'm just getting concerned.
We do, we do...
I was gonna say, these two we have not seen, as far as policy group, like she said. These are just her and her staff doing them.
No, these were brought to the committee, the administrative guidelines. And so really, by process, right, policies are board policies, administrative guidelines. There's actually a policy about administrative guidelines in your policy committee, are done by administration and then brought here just for your information. We've chosen to do them at the board level. This one was brought to the board committee two times ago, right, Kripke? Two times ago.
Oh, that's why I don't remember.
I think we have a thou, thousands left to do. We've done two, we've done three, maybe...
Yeah, thousand, seven, eight.
Eight. We only have three left.
I, I, I hear your concern. I know that these have been going on for a while, so I think we can talk offline and see if there's any, anybody has any other ideas on how to speed up the process. I know that the direction has been that the policy committee wanted to be involved, but it does take time to meet and go through. So I'll, I'll take that as a note to follow up on, to see if anybody has any other ideas on that.
And I'm just worried that we're gonna go into a pretty heavy vacation season here, and it's always hard to get us during the school year, it's even harder to get us over the summer, so.
Yep. I understand.
Like to be able to give our admins some guidelines to follow for next school year.
Same, do you have any other discussion points on those guidelines? Okay, next item is, item G, Edison Max. So Mr. Stoner, if you'd like to come and talk us through, we have two approvals. So the first one is a carpentry, carpentry recommendation. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation, approve the contract award to M.L. Shainer Construction Incorporated for carpentry work at Longfellow Elementary as presented.
Support.
Alright, discussion?
Yes, good evening. If you'll remember, the carpentry bid was part of the original package, but we pulled it because the cost was higher than we anticipated, and we asked the professional team to go back and look at some things to revise the specifications. We did that and rebid the work, and it came in $45,000 lower than the first time, which brought the whole project within budget now. And that was a relief for me, because when you look at all of the totals, we are right on mark of what we early esti, our early estimate were, and also gave us a little cushion if something were to happen unexpectedly. So this is really the last large cost associated with the Longfellow project. There's two small ones still coming to you, and it has to do with some IT work and some other things. But those are budgeted also, and they're not a bid item on a large amount. So our request tonight is just to put the final approval on that project.
Any question, any other discussion from the board? Alright, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next item was the approval of the commissioning service. I don't know if that was in the, no, that's, we need a separate, can I get a motion for that?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation, approve the contract for commissioning services for the Edison Max project to Peter Basso Incorporated, the amount of $28,800 as presented.
I second the motion.
Alright, discussion?
Yes, I think that needs a little explanation, what commissioning is. Systems have become so complicated over a number of years, and the timing to get these done is shortened so much that districts have found that it made sense to bring an independent third-party person in to design a set of checklists, so to speak, on most of the systems, such as heating and ventilation, and put them through their paces at the tail end of the project. What, what it really is, is this third-party verification, that you're getting what you paid for, that it operates according to the way it was designed, and that when you move in, things work right. Now, when I say that, they are complicated, it still takes a while to work out the issues. But this is, I always say, it's like taking a Navy ship out for sea trials. That's what this third-party group does. We went out to bid this service, and I think there was something like seven or eight firms that responded. We did not take the lowest-priced firm, the, the two were very, very close. And a team met with the low bidders and did an evaluation, and we all agreed that the second firm offered more value. They were closer, they were a deeper firm, they had more K-12 experience, or things like that. And I tell you that, that's why, when you look at the numbers, that we, we deviated a little bit, just because it was in the district's best, best interest. The firm chosen is a very reputable firm in the area, and I think they will bring great value to the team. And this is something that is covered with the operation of Oakland Schools.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
I, I just, just a comment, I like that you included on there they work with other districts around here, Troy, Rochester, Pontiac, Royal Oak, Birmingham. That was good to know.
Yeah, when we looked at the different firms, we tried to get somebody that was educationally experienced.
That's great, thank you.
Alright, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item H on the agenda is the establishment of the bank account authorized signers for the Edison project. I don't know who wants to speak to this.
Would you like a motion?
You need a motion, right?
Alright, motion please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the creation of a new bank account at Comerica Bank for the Edison Max renovation project with Superintendent Amy Kripke and Executive Director of Business Operations, William Melching, as authorized signers.
My support.
Alright, discussion. Mr. Melching, would you like to speak?
Sure, the contract that the Board of Education approved with our construction manager, McCarthy and Smith, called for the district to open up a joint bank account with McCarthy and Smith and the district's name on the account, that, with signatures from McCarthy, Smith, and the district. The purpose of the account is, we will receive money from Oakland Schools, will deposit that money in that account to the amount equal to pay applications that have been approved by all the parties involved in the approval process. And then McCarthy, Smith will issue checks out of that account to pay for those authorized pay applications. So what you have in front of you is a request to open that bank account and for authorized signatures on that bank account. Soon as the project's over, account will be reconciled and closed and...
Can I ask why we've gone to Comerica instead of using PNC that we have everything else with?
Uh, it's the relationship with the construction manager and, and Comerica, and they will be writing the checks, and so they...
Requested.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, that was my question.
Alright, roll call.
Schlock?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes. Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Alright, next item, I, on the agenda is Building and Grounds Summer Student Support. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the administration's request to hire five full-time student interns for a period of 10 weeks during the summer, at a cost not to exceed $20,000 to help with the building and ground maintenance.
You have a second?
Oh, I second the motion, sorry.
Alright, discussion. Who's gonna speak to this?
I will.
Dr. Kripke, please.
So at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we talked about how positive it's been the last several summers to have, to Greg, to have support for the Buildings and Grounds. Unfortunately, there seems to be two things that are interrupting the ability of the Promise Zone Unfortunately, there seems to be two things that are interrupting the ability of the Promise Zone to run that this summer. And that would be Kayla's two little ones arriving. And so we are gonna, we would like to continue to move on with that. We found that to be very helpful to do so. And so we are requesting the ability to have five staff members work this summer to help support Buildings and Grounds. We have lots of things that we need to be able to do and we'd like to be able to continue on with that process.
I see it's 31A money that you were using. What is that money supposed to be used to be spent on?
Well, one of the pieces about 31A is that you can use it for career education, so career and support, and so that's the, how we used it for last year as well.
So last year, the summer program was paid out of the 31A as well?
So you can use it for two things too. One of it is, you can use it for K-three, reading literacy, and we do. The other thing is for eighth grade math, and the other thing is also for career and tech education.
I, I may have misunderstood. You said that it was, had something to do with the Promise Zone and that they, they didn't fund it?
No, oh, no, 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 the Promise Zone never funds it.
They just had-
All the, they just coordinate it. And no, I was just being a little funny about the fact that Kayla won't be running this, this summer like she has in the past because there's two thing A and thing B are, are not allowing her to do that. She's gonna be home enjoying her children this summer. And so they aren't, we're not running summer internships as we have in the past, but we would, we would like to continue to run it, at least through Buildings and Grounds. Greg has requested that.
I just kinda, I got a question. So there, you got five staffs at twenty thousand plus benefits. What are the benefits? I mean, if it's only a ten-week program, it's kinda to me temporary.
We have to pay FICA.
For students?
For students.
Social Security, yeah, everyone has to pay taxes.
Okay, well that's, to me, benefits are-
Oh, benefits. No, 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 that's considered a benefit.
Later, later, much later in life.
That's a benefit.
All right.
It's a benefit, yeah, the government gets it.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, in the business world- That just means when, when we say that there's a salary plus whatever, we always have to put, we consider that benefits in the business world.
Are we short on any of this 30A money in the educational, in the schools for any of the other programs?
So this is budgeted. It was budgeted, we did it this year and so we would come forward to use that again.
How much is the 31A grant? How much do we get?
We don't, well, this year it was 1.6 million. We don't know what it'll be in this upcoming school year. But this is the purpose of some of that money, just is to help career and tech add.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item J, heating and cold, heating and air conditioning repairs, can I get a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the administration's recommendation and approve the repair of the air conditioning units at United Oaks that Hazel Park Junior High and Ford School for the cost not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars.
I second the motion. Discussion?
Well, no, this, which will be coming out of the sinking fund to pay for this. This has not come out of the general fund.
Correct. I just got a question. What's wrong with United Oaks Air Conditioning? I heard it was working really well. Well, they didn't have any, my bad. They, they were said it was kinda chilly now that we turned the heat off.
There are some compressors. Well, remember, now, just kind of a statement with that, right, there's a certain time that we have to pick and we can't go one way or another. In schools, that's always the difficult part is when's that magical time when we turn it off, and that magical time was decided last weekend because of the weather coming up. And if we didn't, tomorrow, everybody would be really hot.
So anyone listening, take a sweater for your kid.
I think it's supposed to be in the eighties.
Tomorrow.
So, and it's always really difficult, that decision in schools, right, we would think in today, we would be able to turn the heat off. But there's compressors that are, that are down in these schools and so we need to fix those compressors. So there's, right, more than one unit in different schools. It's not just one little, you know, unit that runs them. And so one of the things that we agreed to do on our list of things that needed to be done and was on our list is things that need to be repaired. And these are the items that they brought to us. We had more than one quote, they were in your packet, so made sure that we had the best possible place to go with. And so these are all places that have compressors that need to be replaced. They're expensive and you have to get them done.
Clearly. Any other discussion on this? All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, next comes up with personnel recommendations. Uh, we, we have these broken out by employee groups so that we can work through our conflicts of interest. The first one is the Ask Me Employee Group. Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the Ask Me Employee Group as presented.
I second the motion. Any discussion?
I just want to point out, as I will as we walk through here, that we have a retirement at long-term. Custodian at the high school has placed his retirement in here and he will be sorely messed.
He will be.
Well, he did say he'd volunteer his time.
I think he said he was gonna substitute. Watch out, kids.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Next one is on the HPASA Employee Group. Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendations for the HPASA Employee Group as presented.
I second the motion. Discussion?
Again, we have a retirement in here, a long-term administrator in the school district that has tenured his retirement as well. And again, he's given many, many years to Hazel Park Schools and he should be commended.
Thirty-eight years?
Doesn't happen very often anymore.
Right. All right, if there's no more discussion, then we'll do a roll, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next item is on the HPEA. Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendations for the HPEA Employee Group as presented.
Second the motion. Discussion?
Not a good one.
Hey, we have eight retirements on the list of teachers that will be sorely messed. And I just often wonder what, what Michigan is doing to continue to help us that we're not pushing to retire. That if Hazel Park was not stagnant the way it has been financially, would we be pushing these teachers to retirement because they're not, they're, they, they can't stay financially because of the benefits they're losing staying long-term. So these teachers will be very, very messed. And I imagine we will continue to see losing a core of our teachers until Michigan can do something about the finances.
Definitely sorry to see some of these go. Again, a lot of these, some really long-term, long-timers with the district that will be missed, so. All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next item is the APPA Employee Group. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the HPPA Employee Group as presented.
I do.
Have? We need a second?
Have a second.
Second. Thank you. Um, discussion. So I would like to clarify something we've been investigating today. I am now gonna have a conflict for the paraprofessional union, which means that four of us have conflicts out of seven. So we have done some research and gotten confirmation from our legal advisors that when this case happens, that your might, that the remaining board members are considered your quorum. So the three people that do not have a conflict are quorum, so we would need two votes to pass it rather than the standard four majority. So I'm just gonna put that out there. So this is something new that we, we looked into today because I saw that and I was like, ooh. So, um, any other discussion on paraproses?
At this time.
All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Abstain.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Good lord.
All right, the next, the next one is IUOE Employee Group. I need a motion?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for that IUOE Employee Group as presented.
Support.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. On item six is non-affiliated employees. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the non-affiliated employees as presented.
I support.
Any discussion?
Again, I want to point out that we have an adult education teacher that is retiring as well from education. And so it's always a loss when we're losing teachers from the educational field.
All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. All right, let's move on to item L. This is the authorization to lay off, to lay off directors, managers, and supervisors. Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the resolution to lay off directors, managers, and supervisors as presented.
I second the motion. Discussion? So at this time, you know, based on recent budget cuts that we've covered in previous months, there are some layoffs for some of the programs that will not be continuing. So we're always sad when we get to the situation. We're sorry to see these programs go that have been with our district a long time, including adult education and the preschool. But these are related to that and in no way represents, you know, their performance. We're, we're thankful for, for everyone that's worked in these areas. That's all I had to say. Uh, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
No.
Atkins?
Yes. Uh, item M is authorization to lay off certain employees. I need a motion?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the resolution to lay off certain employees as presented.
Support. Any discussion? I do. Um, in here, we have teachers, secretary, staff, and all that. These are teachers and I guess I'm kinda, why would we wanna lay off teachers when we have a teacher shortage?
So you have to, first of all, we don't have positions. You have to lay off and they're not part of the union, so we have to, we don't have positions for these people to go into. So you have to lay off and then what you would do is develop a layoff list. But these are people that might not necessarily be qualified to teach in positions and we don't have positions open for them. So unless you wanna carry them on your books, you would have to lay off those positions. So in here, you have adult education teachers, you have preschool teacher, and you have a secretary, and some of them are business people.
So they're not union employees?
They're not union employees.
But if they have their certification, they could apply?
Absolutely, and they've been told that. But the positions will go to our teachers and our union first. So they don't have any rights to our union positions. They have rights to adult education programs and early childhood programs. So the early childhood teacher that's in here, if a teacher leaves, they have first rights to that. They have rights to the adult ed, but if we had a program that ran again, but they can also apply for any position that comes open. But any teacher that we may lay off next month has rights to those positions first. And then anyone outside has rights after that to apply for a position.
That's a good question. Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Upward, yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, item N was, is the approval, approval of our 2018-19 tentative agreements with collective bargaining units. Um, so the first one is Ask Me. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the tentative agreement with the Ask Me Group as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
No, just that we're really grateful for the relationship that we have with our Ask Me Group. That we worked really hard, I believe, to make sure that this agreement came into place and we're really grateful them to do it in such a short period of time. It is a one-year agreement. We're required by Treasury to negotiate only one year at a time. We are very hopeful that we will do well on enrollment and then we can see some kind of changes in our, for our staff next year financially. But, but I, I believe that everybody came to the table in the spirit to, to do, do well for the district in the best interest of the district.
We got them to sign off this week? Is that what we did?
Uh, this was signed off last week and it was voted on Saturday.
So, okay. Because I know you mentioned that they were-
Yep, it's approved.
Okay.
All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. HPASA Employee Group, can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the tentative agreement with the Hazel Park Association of School Administrators Employee Group as presented.
I second the motion. Any discussion on this?
Well, just that the administration came to the table first very quickly to make sure that they approved and passed this agreement leading the way. And that's what we want from our administrators, is to lead the way when changes and things are difficult. So we really appreciate that. And again, we are hoping that we will all gather together as a team and as a family together in Hazel Park and push for the increase of enrollment so that we can push for an increase in our salaries for our families and our teachers here.
If there's nothing else, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Uh, item number three, HPEA Employee Group. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and improve the tentative agreement with the HPEA Association Employee Group as presented.
Second the motion.
Any discussion?
Well, I think the same. Teachers, you know, we worked really hard and work hard on our relationship on a weekly basis. Nancy and I meet and talk about things that we can work on improvement. This is an agreement that we wish we could do differently as we know how difficult it is to have teachers anywhere in the state of Michigan right now, as well as across the country. So we hope that, again, too, that we will gather together as a community, work on enrollment here in Hazel Park Schools so that we may be able to reach out and give a little more money to our, to our teachers.
All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item number four, HPPA Employee Group. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the tentative agreement with the HPPA Employee Group as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
You know, one, one thing that I, I wanna circle back around to the teachers as well as this one is there were increases in salary for center program employees. And so when someone's reading that, what's important really to remember is that center programs does not touch our general fund here. Those are special education programs that are reimbursed by twenty-eight other school districts for the students that attend. So it's really important to remember that when you're reading these and if somebody has some specific questions that says, wait a minute, there are some salary increases that are placed inside here that aren't there for others. That reimbursement also for the students that are generated helps give money back to the school district. So the more students, the more money that gets placed into that program, the more reimbursement that also comes back to Hazel Park that helps offset the general fund. So it's really important. Special education teachers and paraprofessionals are even harder to get than teachers. And so we are really excited that we all work together to try to come up with a solution that will have several wins for the school district in many ways, as well as to the general fund ultimately in the end.
Thank you. All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Abstained.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Item number five, IUOE employee group. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the tentative agreement with the IUOE engineer, I'm sorry, IUOE group as presented.
One, second the motion.
Any discussion on the...
So just so everyone knows, these are our secretaries. If anyone's questioning, like, what is that? Those are our secretaries. They engineer our buildings. We are really fortunate with most of our groups to have no salary taken away from them, even though, you know, that was the way it was looking. Those were, those $2.5 million in cuts tried to help to keep everyone's salaries consistent without taking money away. And this is no different here in the secretary's salary as well. We all want to give all of our teachers, staff, custodians, maintenance, because of the hard work that they do raises. At this time, we were able to keep this consistent, as you can see, inside this country.
All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. All right. Item O is approval of 2018-19 non-union employee salary and benefits. Can I get a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the 2019, 2018, 2019 non-union employee salary and benefits as presented.
Second the motion.
Discussion?
So this sheet is for our central office employees, such we have some secretaries, technology. It also is for our GSRP teachers. If people think we don't have preschool, we still will have preschool next year. It'll just be our GSRP program. This is also for our alternative school teachers which are not part of the union as well. So we, this was developed by Dan Romsek before for us and it finally brought together all of those central office employee positions so that you could see what kind of benefits that were placed as well. Very helpful. So we want to make sure that we had this for you, in front of you today. There are no changes here, other than a line that says, "We may look at medical benefits next year." So there was no increases or reductions.
Thank you. Any, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item P, administrative contracts. Can I get a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education approve the administrative contracts for the 18-19 school year as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
So every year is our job to sign a one-year contract. We cannot, per the contract or per Treasury, sign anything more than a one-year contract to anybody other than the superintendent and our business relationship that we have. That is what Treasury puts in place for all school districts that are in that deficit situation. So we are only allowed to do a one-year contract with our administrators. This is the contract that you sign on a yearly basis. It's not any different than before.
I have a question. Are all the evaluations completed?
We, they do not need to be completed until June 30th.
Okay.
So we pass a contract and they fail there?
You have to do a contract unless you let them go before March.
Well, I'm just saying. All right, no problem.
All the teachers' evals are not completed yet either. And that's just part of the process of ways. Unfortunately, it's a timeframe. Just like the reason why you changed my eval to be done in November. That's that whole process of not renewing contracts. But for administrators and for teachers, that's not the direction that they go in, in the state of Michigan.
All right. Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item Q, approval for 2018-19 paraprofessional staffing. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the administration's recommendation for the 18-19 paraprofessional staffing as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
You can see that we've added in here for you the different levels. In here, we've added level five and six, so you can see where that comes into play. Those are all center-based program paraprofessionals. We also have a couple places where we've reduced some hours. All of those individuals will work with Shirley. Shirley will have a meeting with the paraprofessionals and allow people to bid into open positions that have a reduction of hours. That they will have the right to bid into positions that have the same amount of hours or the same position. We're asking for your approval at this time for the positions. As you know, we bring back any additional positions that we may need in the future for additional students, special education students, or other items that are needed.
Any other discussion on this? All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
You can't say yes.
Good abstain on this one?
Oh. All right, abstain. Abstain again.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. All right. Item R, curriculum update. I see Ms. Pastel coming up, so let's see. This is on the literacy camp summer school. Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education approve the administration's request to provide a summer 2018 Lit Camp summer school program for grades K through three as presented.
Second.
All right, discussion. Can you tell us about the program?
So, and good evening first. Lit Camp is actually a program which we ran last summer, but we're extending the program more this summer because we actually specialize in one of the grade levels. Lit Camp will be grades four through three and we're looking to have, excuse me, not four through three. K through three. It's been a long day. But anyway, K through three. And we're looking to have two teachers per grade. And right now, one of those teachers would still remain, Ms. Lisa Berners. And we've been actually preparing, looking at what we have and what we need to purchase for this year. The program focuses on increasing the reading development of students K through three, so it's an enrichment program. We are opening it up to students K through three, but it is a first come, first served because it has to be 10 to 15 students per grade, per class. And so that's two teachers K through three. Does anyone have questions?
How is it being funded?
So it is being funded through the 35A grant, which is additional instructional time. And so we have budgeted for this program, just as we did last year. And so with the elimination of the elementary summer school program, this is somewhat replacing that. Any other questions?
And this is focused on the grades that would be most affected by legislature?
Yes, K through three.
K through three.
Is there a 35A?
Yes.
There is. No, all I hear is 31, 31, 31.
Yeah.
What, what school are you?
The program will be held at, what, no, United Oaks. United Oaks.
We're left, Mrs. Gressley was giving us a...
Lunch program will be there as well. As I mentioned last month, we talked about the secondary program where the high school lunch program would be there, but the elementary would be at United Oaks. And it would run the same time, eight till 11:30, just as it did last year. Nothing really changes in regards to how the elementary summer school program ran. It's just that this would be focused on literacy and the grade level. Any other questions, comments?
These are incoming or...
Exiting. Exiting kindergarten, exiting first, exiting second and third. So all of they would just be moved up. So the kindergartners, yep.
Okay.
Yep. I know, I think you're thinking of the kinder camp. We try, but not so much.
Yeah, it's disappointing that we can't have as many offerings in the summer, but I'm glad we still have this, so. Any other discussion?
Questions?
Any questions, anybody? All right, thank you.
I think I'm up next again, yes. So pathways to, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Let us vote on this one. Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, next item is the pathway to potential. Can I get a motion?
This is informational.
Oh, informational, sorry.
Yes, so I'll be brief. So this is actually really exciting. This is something that we've been working on since last school year and actually see it come alive over the last few weeks. Has been, it's been really great. We've had an opportunity to actually meet with the success coaches. And so what Pathways to Potential is, is a program that's partnered with the Department of Health and Human Services that allows for what they call success coaches to be pushed into the schools to provide assistance for education, health, attendance, so on and so forth, for families that they already have on their caseload. And so, and when I say the caseload, these are families that have already been assigned to these caseworkers. However, because they're in the building, they're open to providing services for, you know, other students that are in the building. They started two weeks ago and the last one started just last week at United Oaks on Monday. They've all joined the attendance committee and we've met last week. We've kind of, you know, we met at the attendance committee meeting. But we also met together to kind of finalize, how does their role from the state level pair with the attendance policy here in Hazel Park? And so we had a productive meeting last week and we're even meeting tomorrow to kind of work together to construct the letter that will stand as the attendance letter for Hazel Park with the approval of the superintendent, Dr. Croupy. So we're working tomorrow after school on that. It's really exciting. I mean, I'm happy that they're here. They're excited. They have a lot of information. And I mean, they're jumping right on board, getting involved with the committees within their buildings. And as I said before, the attendance committee, which is here at the district level. Does anyone have questions about the program? I didn't want to read exactly what was here, but I can give more.
I have a question.
Yes.
So this seems kind of in line with kind of what our community rep does. Is that, that they both going to be utilizing each other?
Yes, and, yeah, they definitely will be utilizing each other. However, these particular success coaches, we still need the community rep. They work together, however, these success coaches already have cases with the students and families that they would be working with, so it's like an extension. You know, the community rep would be an extension, provided be even more services that are here.
Great.
Are these only for the elementary and junior high?
Currently, yes, so, so just a little bit about. No, I'm with you. So this is initially, well, just so that you know, when someone asks, well, what do you want, Carla? I want them all. So I initially went and we asked for a caseworker or success coach to be at every building. Once they came back and they looked at funding from the state level, they were only able to provide us the three at the elementary and one at the junior high. They are working to determine if come fall, we'll be able to have a caseworker at the high school. However, with the ones that are here in the district, they have been assigned to help work with attendance at the high school. So right now, we're kind of going through the waters, looking at attendance, elementary and junior high. But if we don't have one in district come fall, then the ones that are here in the district now, elementary and junior high, will be able to assist with the attendance at the high school. So the hope is, hopefully, we get one in the fall. But if not, then the ones that are here will at least be able to help with attendance, making calls and things like that.
Hang on, bottom one, three of them from the elementary.
So when you talk about attendance, would it be considered tardies as well?
Well, not from their perspective. They, when I say they, the state, they only look at daily attendance, absences. They don't look at tardies. However, one of the things that, and this was a long discussion last week, one of the things that they did mention is that if there is an issue with tardies, then, you know, a teacher, an administrator, whomever, could actually make a referral. They actually have a referral form and that's something that they would look at because potentially maybe, you know, the parent works midnights and it's difficult for them to get the kid to school on time. So a referral process could be, but their focus would be to pull attendance reports to look at daily, full-day attendance.
Seeing as they're kind of starting in April, how long of a commitment? Like, do we know for sure they'll be here through all of next year?
Oh, for sure, all of next year and until whenever the program is dissolved. But it's been around for some years, so I don't foresee it being, this funding was actually, more funding was actually given to the program this year and for next year, but go ahead.
And I think if you look at a lot of the movement that's happening right now with school safety and mental health, and I met today with Ken Coleman from St. John's. We went to the high school to visit to look at the place where potentially we could have the medical clinic if the funding comes through from the state. That's really where that, that funding's at. There's a lot of money being sent aside for mental health services. So we're really fortunate to be benefiting from these mental health services. I don't see that going away anytime soon. It's really separate from the educational budget. But there's a huge push right now to get mental health back into the schools. So it's really exciting to see and we really are excited to benefit from that. So you're also going to see Carla in charge of our code of conduct and our handbook committee, which will focus in on that attendance policy as well. And we've been doing some research on that. So you'll see something come to you sometime in the summer, so you'll be able to see some of the changes that we put in place for next year.
Any other questions, now, from the board?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Very much.
Moving on to item S, approval of the 2018 tax rate request. Can I get a motion?
So I am making, I move that the Board approves the 2018 tax rate request as presented.
Second.
By Mr. Minister.
Mr. Melching?
Yes, what you have this evening is what's called the tax certification. You approve this every year and what you're doing is setting the millage rates that will be levied for the upcoming fiscal year. You have really four millages that are on there. The first is the 18 mills on the non-Homestead. The original, approved by the voters, was 18 mills, but due to heavily rollback, we're asking for 17.3559 mills for the next year, which generates about $2.92 million worth of general operating money for the district. And that is really a loss of $108,000 due to the heavily rollback. The other one, sinking fund, originally approved at two mills, heavily rollback, rolls it back to 1.9516 mills. That's a loss of about $15,131. So that's why obviously we're going for the millage heavily overrides in the fall. The other two are debt millages which aren't impacted by the heavily rollback and they're set at 13 mills and two mills. Once approved, this document then goes to the city of Hazel Park and the city of Ferndale, who then do a summer tax levy for us. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item T is the approval of the revised enhanced deficit elimination plan. Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation and approve the revised EDEP as presented.
Support. Discussion, so turn it back over to you.
Yes, this, last week, we went to the Department of Treasury and had a meeting on what you see in your packet. And that meeting went very, very well. And so what we have for you this evening is a 12-year EDEP plan, which really, over the course of those 12 years, based on the assumptions that are in the executive summary that you see, I won't go through all those, but this has a surplus based on those assumptions. Every year, starting in 1819 and going through the 12-year plan and then the fund balance becoming positive in the 13th year. We try to be very conservative with our assumptions. I won't go through all of those. There's quite a few of them, both on the expense side and the revenue side. And so we're fairly confident. Treasury seemed to be confident with the plan, too. And so I would open it up to any questions you may have. Yes?
Are they open to us continuing in this climate? Because we're, you know, they just pulled $500,000, the state does, at any point in time from us. Are they open to that, if we need to purchase extra equipment and potentially go over category in some of these budgeted items, that they're open, that we can still do business as a school district? And, you know, keep our district afloat so we can still be able to recruit kids and keep, you know, keep what we have here, brick and mortar, keep going?
Yes, that's a good question. And yes, everyone understands this is a real, living, breathing document. It will be adjusted every year. We will be meeting with Treasury or providing them with updates on this as things, you know, change, even ebb and flow throughout the years. So yes. And we also tried to build in some things, a little bit into this, for some capital outlay type of expenditures, to do some things, like replace things that might need to be replaced. So yes, they're open and understand that it's a living, breathing document and it will be adjusted as we make changes throughout those 12 years. There's no real way to even project really, with real accuracy, even next year, let alone 12 years out.
Are they going to have a still report monthly up to them? Okay.
Yes. If approved, we will stay on that monthly reporting with them. Yes.
Good.
Yeah, I traveled with the administration to, with Dr. Croupy and Mr. Melching and there was, and some people from ISD to meet with the state. And, yeah, they were, we had a really good conversation about some of the challenging, the challenging climate in Michigan. I think they're acknowledging, you know, teacher retention and salaries, like, and enrollment as real challenges. And they seem to really kind of understand where, how we were being affected. And I thought it was a positive conversation. So that was, that was good to hear.
I like them calling it a roadmap, because I think that that's what, I think that's going to make us successful. I think when we first pitched this out a few years ago, it was kind of hard and dirty, just get it through the five years and not realizing there was going to be like these major hurdles at the legislature. And I think that what everyone's understanding, I think this is a, it's a doable plan. It's not where we want to be, right? But it's a doable plan.
I think one of the things that was really positive for me is that I think they know and trust the team here in Hazel Park. And I think that they have confidence in the team here in Hazel Park and they were really clear about that conversation. And Gloria can agree with that. As they greeted us, they had a lot of confidence at the team. As they greeted us, they had a lot of confidence at the team, and I think that's really important for the people of Hazel Park to hear, that Treasury is looking for us to continue to lead the way in that conversation. But they also, what I really, really loved is the conversation and the concern about making sure that we can attract and retain teachers. That was, I've always felt very stressed about the EDEP because I, out of the great concern about where we are in Oakland County as related to other school districts, and we talked about that, that was one of the first things that I talked about, is the difficulty it is for us when we're one of the lowest-paid school districts in Oakland County, and how devastating that is to our teachers and our students, as well as the difficulty about where we sit when other school districts around us can steal our students. And so that was a really great conversation to have, and really felt that they were really open to the fact that they agree that we have to be able to retain our teachers. And so we really hope that, I mean, that doesn't mean that we can go and jump in, but that, what that means is that if this is approved, the expectation to ebb and flow based upon prudent thinking about what we need to do is that we won't have a school district if we can't write, if we can't do things that make sense. You have to be reasonable about what you're doing, but you have to ebb and flow that roadmap.
Yeah, they, I was impressed that they looked at it and then said there were some things that Treasury might be able to do to work with us, to waive some requirements on some of our debt things and stuff like that, in order for us to try to build in maybe a little bit more in the terms of wage increases, not huge ones, not, you know, what everybody would want, but at least more than what we have in here, which is very minimal. And so I thought that was encouraging, too, that they were willing to kind of say that to us in the first, in our meeting and ask us to go back, approve it tonight, but then again, we'll be working on it and giving an update here in about another thirty days.
So they're willing to waive our bond?
No, I didn't say that.
It's running out there.
Can I tell you that that was floated out there about how Detroit was helped, couldn't we help Hazel Park in the same way? And I think that was a resounding no. Just think we're going to get that same treatment.
But they were willing to work with us on some things and point us in the direction that will help.
All right, good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? I know the finance committee went through this at length, and so we've seen a lot of the detail. All right, let's go with the roll call then.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. And if it wasn't clear, all of this will be bundled and sent to the state tomorrow, right? All the?
This is all due to the state, May first, with all of our vendor contracts, our TAs, and the EDEP plan has to be in their hands tomorrow. And so if I take a moment just to say thank you to Oakland ISD and to our vendors, to our teachers, and also to our finance committee, because that was a lot of work to get, and to you guys, when we finished this this evening, to get all this together.
There's been a tremendous amount of effort to get this organized this month, so thank you to Dr. Croupy. Thank you to Mr. Melching, who has stepped in and really helped us, and we're so glad you're here to provide some stability in the finances and to get this all pulled together. This was a lot of work, and we're, we had a good meeting with the state, so we'll get this all submitted to them and hope to hear good news back from them in terms of an approval. All right, moving on to item U, approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Ferndale for transportation. Can I get a motion?
Move that we approve the eighteen nineteen IGA with Ferndale School District for Transportation, Management, and Maintenance Services as presented.
I second.
All right, discussion on this?
So nothing has changed here. This is the agreement that you entered into years ago. They just provide us with maintenance as well as oversight and operations. It's our drivers that drive, so it's just one person that does that. So there's not also an increase to the cost of that as well, as remain consistent. So we're really grateful for that partnership, and again, that another one of our partners has agreed not to raise any cost for us for this upcoming school year.
That's great. Any other discussion from the board? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item B, approval of the vendor service agreements. So the first one is A Sweet Services LLC. Can I get a motion?
Move that we approve the Second Amendment addendum to the vendor service agreement between the school district of the city of Hazel Park and A Sweet Services LLC as presented.
I second the motion.
Discussion?
So again, we're really grateful to our vendors to continue to have an agreement with our vendors, and so this agreement reaches out to two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. I just have, this is our, the online? This one is access.
This is the online, okay. Any other?
Right, no, Michigan cyber?
On site.
On, this is the onsite one? This is the onsite one?
Okay.
Good thing they're here to tell us.
Any other questions from the board? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item number two is A&amp;I Enterprises. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the vendor services agreement between the school district of Hazel Park and A&amp;I Enterprises as presented.
Support.
Here's your online. And you'll notice we've also extended for five years to two thousand twenty-three as well, so we're really grateful that they continue to be a great partner with us.
Mrs. Hammond?
Rosie.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, roll call.
Schloss?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item number three, Sir Metro Detroit Jobs. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Fourth Amendment to the vendor services agreement between the school district of the city of Hazel Park and Sir Metro Detroit Jobs Progress, Inc., as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
This is only a one-year extension between the school district and Sir Metro at this point in time.
Are they not looking to extend it any further?
We aren't looking to at this point in time, just to do a one-year extension at this point.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Schloss?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, superintendent update. Dr. Croupy?
Just that we have our PTA council dinner coming up. If you haven't responded yet, that is a time when we will recognize all of our retirees, our five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year employees as well. So if you have the opportunity to come, we'd really appreciate it. That is on May ninth. Tickets are ten dollars, and so we'd really appreciate you to have the opportunity to come. The other piece that I didn't want to, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, that you did not see Invest, which is another one of our vendors, and want to let you know that we already have a contract that extends out, but they've asked us to extend their contract out five more years as well. So we'll be working on extending that contract out, and we'll be bringing that to you guys as well. So we really appreciate the fact that our vendors continues to be partners here with Hazel Park Schools.
All right, board member comments?
I do. Can I get an update on when class day is?
There's a memo that will be coming out regarding that. I don't have class day, but I asked Mr. Daly about that because I saw some banter going on out there, and he said it was sent home to, with the kids in the beginning of the year sheet with all of the seniors. So that, he will have a sheet that's going out to everybody online, and you will also get a sheet with an updated of all your activities for the month of May that Debbie will do before May fourteen.
Can we light a fire on the road?
They get that to you.
These things aren't already in the Google Calendar online?
You know what? That class day is not on there, so I just want to confirm that class day. I reminded him again this morning. He's hot and heavy in the middle of some evaluations, finishing those last few evaluations. I believe that's probably where he is tonight, and so he will get that email out to everybody as well. It was reminded to him again today.
Graduation is thirty-first.
Graduation is the thirty-first. It was passed to be moved to a Thursday. We're hoping that we will be able to garner some more attendance there, especially by